I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held December 3rd, 2013 at 6:00 PM at the City Council chambers. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Olinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Garrison?
Present.
Councilmember Houghton?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Pat Dirks will come up and lead us in the pledge. Right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Mayor, council members, just want to let the public know in particular that our recycling center is operational up at the transfer station on West Mingus that -- gotta get my glasses on. We've got a very active weekend. We have the Chamber of Commerce Parade on Saturday, and that usually starts at 11:00. And we have the Chocolate Walk that night. Also, we have the VIP Chocolate Walk Friday night, which will be the second year of that. We will have the tree lighting, and we'd recommend that people get down here at about 5:45 to participate in that. And you'll also notice that we've added a new decoration this year, the Grinch appropriately placed over our Finance General Manager's office.
(laughing) Perfect place.
And so he's very happy with that. Also, this Saturday, December 7th, from 3:00 to 5:00, Alley Ollie Boutique is doing a fundraiser for our library, and they'll be at the Parks and Recreation Center, and they'll be selling various items, and they'll be suggesting a $5 donation. So if you'd like to support the library and help out Alley Ollie Boutique, there's an opportunity to do it this weekend. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilmembers, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, there's two more events in town going on this weekend that people may want to know about. Saturday at 3:30, I believe it's 3:30, at the recreation center is the City of Cottonwood Annual Holiday Concert.
3:00.
3:00, very good. I have to be there on time, so I'm glad you reminded me. And then on Sunday, and I believe this one's at 3:30, at Mingus Union High School is the Verdi Valley Voices. And these are just two groups that actually--
Saturday.
That's Saturday, too.
That's Saturday.
The Verdi Valley Voices is on Saturday.
Thank you. The Verdi Valley Voices is on Saturday, and the City of Cottonwood Concert is on Sunday.
We'll let that gentleman make the announcement next time.
Yeah, I will.[507.86][507.86](laughing) Well, I have to be at both of them. I should've had him correct.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor?
The Flying High Turkey Drive was a great success. The Cottonwood Chamber in the City of Cottonwood came in second to Chino -- to Prescott Valley, and it was our first time that we were challenged, so we did really well. And I was able to go -- I was on the ladder for every five turkeys. You got to go up a rung on the ladder. I made it all the way to the top and all the way back down, and then someone else took over at 4:00, and she made it quite a ways up, too, and back down. So we had a big participation. We want to thank all the people in the City of Cottonwood and the surrounding area for all the turkeys and the donations, because it doesn't go a long way, but we got enough to help out the mission. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay. Moving on to the next item, presentation by Alvin Stump, who's the District Engineer for the Arizona Department of Transportation regarding the proposed plan for intersection access points on State Route 260 between Thousand Trails and I-17. And I just want to thank Mr. Stump for the hard work that he's been doing. Want to thank ADOT for funding this project, based upon how well all of the cities and towns and counties can work with ADOT together, which we've all been working toward for quite some time now. So it will be good to have the council and members of the public, and even our television public, be able to see these maps and hear the plan, so that they will have a chance to input if they wish. So go right ahead.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate you offering for us to be here tonight. I want to introduce James Bramble, our Development Engineer, and Megan Kettner from our Public Affairs Group. If you can, they're here. As you all are aware, this year, the Transportation Board awarded funding to construct the last segment of 260 between Thousand Trails and I-17. And it was contingent on having consensus throughout the Verdi Valley on what the improvements are. And so the past several months, representatives of all the communities have been meeting regularly to develop a plan for the project and also an access management agreement that everybody can agree to. And so that -- I'm going to present the key bullet points and also share kind of what we're looking at. First of all, access management is really important for the purpose of safety, as well as improving the operation of the highway and creating less congestion. And then lastly, we get a longer return on our investment. Now, a few years ago, back when things were -- the funding was a little better, there was the mindset that, well, we'll go ahead and at some point widen 260, and then somewhere down the road, we can even think about the forest alignment when 260 gets to a point where it's not functioning as well. Well, that's changed. So instead of us just thinking about these improvements lasting 20 years, we need to think about how to get them to last 30 years or better. And I think with the plan that we've been working on, that's going to accomplish that. And so I'll share that with you here. We've identified seven intersections that would be full intersections throughout this seven-mile corridor. Our goal was to try to accomplish a minimum of one-mile spacing, and we accomplished that for the most part, with the exception of Thousand Trails and Quarry Drive. And, you know, we're a little under between our two middle intersections, but we're fairly So that was a key point. Most of these intersections were identified in the original plan. Of course, that was designed more for interchanges. We were looking at more of a freeway-type design here. Now we're looking at a little more of a limited-access-type design, but -- so, starting on your left here, this is Thousand Trails, which would be a full intersection, and then Quarry Drive would be the next one. And then heading east, the existing Old 279, we're looking at moving -- creating a right-in, right-out in both directions, and then having the main intersection be a little bit further down. And then just under a mile from that one, we would have another full intersection, and then we would have Cherry Creek, Horseshoe Bend, and Wilshire. We would allow one left-in in each direction in this area for the existing residential development, but -- and then the other part, we're -- as far as what the roadway's going to look like, between Thousand Trails and Horseshoe Bend, we're looking at a four-lane-divided highway, much like you, we did in the last section there. And then as you get closer to the freeway between Horseshoe Bend and Wilshire, it would be what we call an urban fringe, which would have the eight-foot shoulders on the outside, but a center-raised median in the middle, much like what's out there now. And so our key points for this agreement is to, just what I mentioned, as far as the roadway section, and then identifying those seven key intersections. And then lastly, another part of it is, we feel if we design roundabouts at these intersections, we can design it such that the main line will have a level of service of B for at least 20 years. And what that means is basically between 10 and 20 seconds of wait time, average wait time, at the intersection. That's how we evaluate level of services at intersections. So those are the key points that we're looking to accomplish in this agreement, and from the engineering side, it makes sense, also trying to balance the opportunities for commercial development against having a good corridor for the rest of the Verdi Valley. Again, here's the two typical sections. This is the fringe urban. You can see the raised concrete median in the middle, eight-foot shoulders. And then when you're in the four-lane-divided section, you'll actually have a 10-foot outside shoulder through that. And again, these are the intersections, the two middle intersections, we have not come up with a name yet. Those are -- it's something that Camp Verdi and the nation will probably come up with a name for those, so that's why we just call them Four and Five. And then I'm just going to show what we're proposing here. Thousand Trails would be the first roundabout, which we would design it so -- create the opportunities so that there could be connection across the forest to the private land there or future development. And then on a Quarry Drive, kind of a similar thing. This is conceptual. I don't know that it'll go this far out, or -- as far as ADOT, we expect to build a certain amount, but I -- this would be more of a local project, is what we would see. But the idea is to have the opportunity for all the properties along here to get to the intersection, where they can get in and out easy. The next intersection, this is what we call Intersection 5, which basically, at Old 279, it's all on the forest. So we looked at how we could move it into the private land, so again, development could benefit from the intersection, and so that's the concept we're looking at there. That way, it can be tied into Old 279 there, and then also serve the properties on this Same thing with the next intersection. Again, there's the opportunity to connect to Old 279, as well as serve the properties in this area. And then down here at Cherry Road, where you currently have a signal, it would also be converted to a roundabout and service both sides, similar to what it's doing today. And then down at Horseshoe Bend, this intersection could move some. To do the improvements right at the existing intersection is a little bit of challenging because of how all of the roads come in here, so one idea might be to slide it down to the east a little bit to eliminate some of those conflicts. And then the last key intersection would be at Wilshire, and service those properties down there. And then the rest of the intersections and driveways would be right-in, right-outs, and utilize the roundabouts for the left-turn movements. And I just put this in, this is what we mean by level of service. When you're looking at traffic, there's different definitions. If you're on the highway, it's just basically a function of how many cars are in -- on the roadway at a given moment. But at an intersection where you're actually stopping traffic or forcing in and slowing down, it's evaluated by how long you're sitting there waiting. And with the roundabouts, we expect to be in the level-of-service A range for a real long time until at one of those intersections, maybe a Walmart or something comes in, a real high-trip generator. And then some improvements would have to be done, but we would still be in this range. However, if we went with signals, most likely, we're going to start out right here, and then gradually, as more and more traffic comes to those intersections, the level of service would continue to drop down. So that's why we feel we can maintain this high-level service for a long time. And the way to do this is, we're going to size the roundabouts so that future improvements can be done. Like, for example, let's just say there's -- on this corner, a large development comes in. They can do improvements. They can carve out this little bit of the median and add an extra lane. Same thing on the inside, so that the additional capacity can be provided without major reconstruction.
So you want to explain -- I've heard you explain to some other groups that these roundabouts are going to be just designed just a little bit differently than the Four or Five we have out here between--
Yes.
-- Cottonwood and Clarkdale. I guess it's Five.
Oh, yeah, that's the next topic. We've -- since we built those roundabouts, we've evolved quite a bit as far as our design technology, and one of it is has to do with how we accommodate trucks. And so if you look at these two intersections, this is, of course, the Black Hills, Verdi Heights roundabout, and this one is in Chino Valley, one of our newer ones. Some of the key differences, this diameter from the outside to outside is about 192 feet, and this one's about 222. So right there, the size helps a little bit. This one's designed so that -- because this is a good example, this property's going to be commercial property sometime. So at that point, they can cut into another lane, develop another left turn, get traffic in and out of there. This is also designed to be three lanes on main line as well, so that flexibility will be designed in. Then as far as how we accommodate for trucks, one of the differences, this median is pulled back a little bit further from this one, which allows the trucks, as they go through the intersection, they can -- they have a little more room to swing wide, so they can actually stay in their lane better. And so that's one of the key things. It still controls speed, so when you approach this roundabout, you still have to slow down to the 20 to 25 mile-per-hour range. But then, as you start to come out of the roundabout, this is a much more larger radius than this one. You can kind of notice, from right here, it's almost a straight line, to where this one's still -- you curve around. So as you come out of this one, you have to brake just a little bit, to where this one you can actually start to accelerate a little bit. So that's another improvement that helps both trucks and drivers of regular vehicles as well. And so -- but -- and then this is a good example, too, because when we designed this roundabout, this was considered to be done in the future, this extra left turn at that intersection, but at the time, the decision was made to go ahead and install it now, so it wouldn't have to be disrupted later. As far as our schedule, our construction funding is in our fiscal year '16. We're going to start final design early next year. We have a designer onboard to kind of update our original plan, and then we'll go to final design. I'm also hoping to do a construction manager at risk, that we can bring the contractor onboard during design. I see some great opportunities to do that with a seven-mile section of road. I think there's potentials for cost savings, and also opportunities to coordinate with both the City of Cottonwood and Camp Verdi as far as potentially -- I'm working on some backroads in conjunction. That's something that, for example, we're doing in Chino Valley on the project. We're -- that project's going to generate a lot of millings, and we're actually giving that to the town, and they're going to build some parallel roads. So it's a good inexpensive way to get some of that done. But we're kind of at the point where we're wanting to get the IGA complete. We're hoping by the end of the year, but we're a little bit behind, so basically hoping to have everybody onboard by January, and so that'll fit well. We have the Transportation Board meeting in January in Prescott this year, so--
What date is that?
I think it's January 18th, I believe.
Okay, well--
It's that Friday, 17th to 18th. And so I'm -- my goal is to be able to present to the board and say, "We're good. We got everybody signed off on it."
Great. So the thing that we've been working on, too, is with Camp Verdi, they agree that we would like to have bicycle accommodations, and so that might be coming up in your plan here, too.
Of course, for the entire length of the project, we're going to have eight or 10-foot shoulders, so those -- so that part's going to be covered. I know the last project did no rehabilitation on the shoulders. I understand they're not in the best of shape, so--
Will there be enough money from the project to fix that?
Well, that's what I'm hoping for. We don't have an updated estimate yet, but that's one of the things. We're going to include this in the clearance, so if we can come up with the funding, we can go ahead and do pavement rehab on the shoulders, go on eastbound through that section.
Yeah, that's one thing that the MS Ride, for the public's benefit, the Multiple Sclerosis Ride, the first-- Sclerosis Ride, the first year that we hosted it in Cottonwood, they went to Camp Verde and Sedona. And the second year, they didn't go to Camp Verde because the first year scared them to death. So, I think, you know, as an economic driver for the Verde Valley, if we can get that connection between all, you know, Camp Verde, Sedona, Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and back, that would be really great for future opportunities to have, you know, events like that in the Verde Valley. That was quite successful, and Jesse rode his bike in that. His wife has MS, and so, of course, his family is quite connected to all of the challenges. But, are you going to ride again this year?
I'm riding again this year.
Okay.
Big guy, little bike.
So, thank you very much. Any questions from members of the council? How about the public? Do you have any comments on this item, sir?
The fact that these things are expensive and dangerous...
Sir, if you could come up to the lectern so that everybody can hear you in TV land.
Yeah, I'm Gary of Cottonwood. Anyway, outside of the fact that these are dangerous and expensive to build, most people hate them, why are we putting in roundabouts?
Well, to answer that question, we're putting them in because they are safer than signals.
Cheaper.
Safer?
Yes.
And cheaper.
And cheaper.
No comment?
I don't know. I was just going to...
Some folks love them and some folks love to hate them.
But, the key, the reason, if somebody runs through a red light and T-bones somebody going 55, it's a pretty serious injury. Somebody, if there is an accident, somebody here does not yield, you look at the angle that this person's coming in and the angle that they're coming in, and it's at a low speed, the accident is not going to be anywhere near as severe as the T-bone accident is. And that's...
Mr. Pratt?
Another one I've heard about roundabouts is that you actually cut down on the amount of air pollution because you don't have cars sitting there idling, and I think that's a consideration, too.
That's true.
Yeah, we've had this discussion for many years now, so it's good to get the public's input. We appreciate that. So, any more questions or comments for Mr. Stump? Thank you very much, and we want to say thanks to the aid board for bringing funds to our communities to make them better. We appreciate you.
All right. Thank you.
It's exciting to know it's going forward. It's going to be so much safer. Okay, so, the next item is presentation, oh, before we did that, I wanted to kind of backtrack here. One thing that I forgot to mention was, we have Pastor Navarez here tonight, and he's going to have to meet, is he still here? Where is he? He's way in the corner. So, can you help me with the dates of your show?
It's this Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 1:30, 7:00, Sunday at 7:00, and Monday at 7:00.
Okay, so, this is the celebration of Christmas at Emmanuel Fellowship?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been to, gosh, maybe four of them or five, but if you haven't seen this show, it is so wonderful. And it's all actors that are, it's local actors, and it is just really amazing what our local folks, the talents that they bring to the stage. It's just, if you haven't seen it, you really should. It's so great. Okay, so, the next item is presentation by Darrell Dirks regarding the Rising Hope Food Pantry. And Darrell wasn't able to make it tonight because the Rising Hope Food Pantry gives out food on Tuesdays. So, therefore, he's still very busy tonight. But, his good wife, Pat, is here. She's a partner in whatever Darrell does, they're doing that as a team. So, she's going to share with us a little bit tonight about the Rising Hope Food Pantry, and then, a new program that's coming up about, I guess, I'm going to get a grocery bag or some kind of bag at my house and fill it up every time I go to the store with a couple cans or some food, and you're going to collect those. And you're going to share that information with us tonight and tell the whole community how we can work together to participate.
Great.
All right.
And thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to present tonight. Rising Hope Food Pantry operates out of Cottonwood Christian Assembly at 740 East Mingus Avenue, right, we always say, near the post office. Pastor doesn't like us to say that, but that's where we are.
And that's how you find you.
We started April 10th, 2012, and that first week, we had 28 families. Recently, as of last week, we had 325 families. It looked like we were on course tonight to have about 50 families from the four-to-six venue, and we had, we're open from 2:00 to 10:00 earlier today, so we're probably going to have close to 300 families again today. We are now an alliance member with the St. Mary's Food Bank from Phoenix, and that's where the majority of our food that we distribute comes from. We also have an affiliation that we recently formed with Northern Arizona Food Bank in Flagstaff, and we have established several relationships with other food pantries in the area, in the community. And what we do is, we share our overages with each other so that the piggies aren't getting fat in Verde Valley. We want the food that we get to be distributed to people, not animals. We now have over, served over 2,000 different families in our pantry alone, and we're giving out about 15,000 pounds of food each week. That's in a one-day period of time. That's six hours that we give out that much food. We have about 50 pounds of food per family. Of course, some of the larger families get more, and the smaller families get a little less, but that's an average, 50 pounds per family. We had a soup and sandwich supper, well, actually, it was all day long, on last Tuesday, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That was a great hit, and we're going to do that again Christmas Eve. So, the council's invited to come down and have soup and sandwiches with our patrons and our volunteers. We're serving from 9:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. So, stop by. It's free. We will also be giving out Christmas gifts. We started that today. We have some volunteers who are great garage sale shoppers, and we've had donations from the Dollar General store in the form of toys, and that'll be happening this week, and it's probably closed now, but the next two Tuesdays. But, it's only for their patron, it's not for the public in general. We have also received some money donations that help us give gift cards to our families. So, that's, it's a, it's a great opportunity for people to share what they have with others who have not. Rising Hope Food Pantry's had over, well, over 200 different volunteers, some coming for one time, some coming seven and eight times a week to help with what we do. This is not a one-day-only project. Our primary mission is to feed the hungry. Unlike some other food pantries in the area that are doing other missions, our food, our project is to feed people and people who are hungry. We also shop with our guests. That's a feature that a lot of the food pantries don't do. They generally sometimes just give the food in a box to a family and say, "Here's your food, thank you very much." We develop a relationship with our patrons or offer that opportunity where we actually shop. We have grocery carts, we lay the food out, we go and we distribute the food per what they need and what we have in bounty. We have a prayer table also that's available and actively working to help provide needs for our guests. It's not a requirement, it's off to the side, but it's an opportunity, and we have many statements about how that's been helpful. We have a proxy system where a neighbor, a relative, or a friend can be authorized to pick up food and take it out to our transportation-challenged guests. We have several wonderful volunteers who take the food out to the people who cannot However, that has, we have to have a volunteer that's willing to do that. We don't regularly take people, food out to people. They have to have found somebody in their neighborhood or a friend that will come and get the food. We do not have enough volunteers, nor is it our policy to deliver food like Meals on Wheels or something. We do not do that. Recent statistics reveal that nationally, one in five people are food insecure, meaning they don't know where their next meal is coming from. I find that a frightening statistic. As a state, Arizona is one in four, where the worst in the nation, only surpassed by Mississippi for the number of hungry people in their state. Arizona ranked, yeah, 49th. Our Verde Valley is one in three. One in three, that means children are going to bed hungry at night, folks. One in three. This is a frightening statistic. There are several programs in the valley that, besides the food pantries trying to fill this huge void, our schools have free and reduced lunch programs for breakfast and lunch for qualified students. Some schools have as many as 89% of their students qualifying in this valley. There is a backpack program that some of our schools have that sends food home for the weekend in a backpack for the family. Plans are happening for a summer feeding program in several areas in the valley also. You have heard of the Food Stamp Program that has the Rising Hope Food Pantry? Well, this, what we're going to be doing is working with Yavapai Food Council, that's speaking to the Green Bag Project that you mentioned, Mayor. The Yavapai Food Council is an affiliation of people here in the valley that are concerned about the hunger, and they're developing different programs to combat that. One of the things that they're bringing is something called Yavapai Food Neighbors Project. And in Cottonwood, it's starting this December. The way it happens is, we recruit food coordinators, and those food coordinators, in turn, recruit 10 to 15 friends and neighbors from their neighborhoods. And they're given each a bag, a grocery bag. I didn't bring one tonight, I should have. And it's a reusable bag, like we've all used. And then, when your family shops for your groceries that week, you can buy an extra can or two and put it in the, aside in the green bag. Then, every two months, you set that bag outside your door, and the food coordinator that's recruited you comes by Saturday morning, the second Saturday of every even month, and picks up your food bag and takes it down to the collection site where it's weighed and then distributed to food pantries or other feeding programs, such as Meals on Wheels, backpack programs, that sort of thing. This is a way that a sustained food drive can happen. It's a food donor program. It's like we know the, we're familiar with the post office food drive. That happens once a year. We're familiar with the holiday food drives, again, once a year. When we get all that food, we have to store it somewhere. It's, so, this is a way, when we can do it every two months, that the food, because people get hungry all year long. They don't get hungry at Thanksgiving and Christmas, and, you know, when the mail carriers do their drive, we get hungry all the time, and we need food all the time. So, this is a way that we can get the food, and it's a wonderful program. And the way you can find out about it is, I invite you to come to Cottonwood Christian Assembly, 740 East Mingus, December 14th. Come around 10, 10 to 12:30. The food will be being collected, weighed, and distributed at that point. We will have a sign-up table that you can sign up, get your own coordinator, the coordinator will bring you a bag, and you, too, can be a participant. It's easy, it's simple, it's painless, and it's a way you can share what you have with others. Our Rising Hope Food Pantry is a zero-budget operation, and by that, I mean, we do not have to go out and raise money to keep ourselves in operation. Cottonwood Christian Assembly provides us with no-charge facilities. We do not pay for electricity. We do not pay for heat. We do not pay for rent. We do not pay for salaries. Everything that is done at that church is done either through a donation of time or money. But, we have no overhead, if you will. And that's, we commend the church for stepping forward and doing that. It's a mission for their church. Some of the food pantries have to raise $6,000 to $60,000 a month to keep themselves in operation. They're paying directors, they're paying employees, they're putting trucks on the road, et cetera. We have none of that. We all donate our time and trucks and whatever. There are a number of other missions that we've seen through our food pantry that need to be addressed here in this valley. I know the mission tries to address some of those, but I'm here to tell you that poverty causes lots of problems, not just being hungry. Many of our guests need help learning to speak English. They need guidance in child rearing. They need help with financial planning, whatever resources they have, they need help in managing it. They need crisis management. I had a man today who had been kicked out of his home, and he's living in his truck. He was in tears. We need clothing. We need shelter. We need transportation, and we need encouragement and love for these folks that are trying to do the best they can. I invite this community, the people who are behind me, the people who are in front of me, and the people who are listening on TV, to please come forward and do something that can help. And you can do it as easily as getting a green bag. You can call Rising Hope Food Pantry. It's 928-274-2456. We'll connect you with a food coordinator if you want to be part of the food drive. And I also invite you all to come down, and we'll put an apron on you, and you can come down and volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your presentation, Vice Mayor.
I had the honor and privilege of having a friend. I didn't realize that she'd put me on as an alternate to pick up things for her, and she was having a problem one day, so she called me and asked me if, when I went to the post office that day, if I'd go in there. It's very comfortable, it's, it's really a nice thing to see with the people, taking the people shopping, and it was very easy. It was not difficult, and it was a pleasant experience. So, I want to thank your group, and I want to thank her for putting me on there because I got a chance to firsthand see exactly how it works, and it's very, very comfortable.
Yeah, we need carryouts, we need registrars, we need prayer partners, we need shoppers, we need food suppliers, we need grocery-getters. I mean, we need people who are willing to come and put your shoe on the pavement, because that's what we need. And you will be blessed many times over. We have heartwarming stories every day. It is very hard for our patrons to come through the door. There are many people who have never, ever been where they are financially. They have, there was a lady who came today, I made her cry inadvertently, because she came in, she's a recent widow, she hadn't had the right paperwork, somebody told her to come back at 2:00. 2:00 is when we close. We're open from 10:00 to 2:00, and then, we close down, put all the chairs, most of the chairs away, and then, we do a prepack, which is a prepacked box of food for the four to six. And that's mostly for people who are working and are on their way home, and they don't have, they don't want to sit around for an hour and a half waiting for somebody to take them shopping. But, she says to me, I had, I had her in tears because I was going to have her come back at 4:00, and she said, "But, she told me to come at 2:00." And somebody had told her to wrong. And I said, "Come on, come on." And she tells me her story, which is... And she tells me her story, which is, her husband's recently deceased, she's 89 years old. She went from having a salary of almost $4,000 a month. Her husband died. His pension didn't go to her. There was no widow benefits. She's now living on $800 a month. And she said, this food keeps me from not being completely disabled. So we hear that every week. And I know the mission. I know New Hope Food Pantry can tell you the same stories. Sedona Food Bank, Mountain View Methodist Church. I mean, you name anybody who's running. St. Vincent de Paul. Any of us who are running a food pantry have a list of stories, and we'll be glad to share them with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is Call to the Public. This, I was, you know, I wonder if we could get our staff to come up, get the chairs out of there and sit here with us, so that some folks that are here could have a seat.
I let my husband put all the food.
Okay. I'm sure he would appreciate your help.
Good.
Okay.
I'm sticking with it.
Okay. Are you keeping up your chair?
We were discussing when we'll be done tonight.
And, yeah. Maybe back right there is a little more space.
It's now pushed it out to 8:00. No, it was good. I enjoy hearing those things. I don't know about a lot of these things that happen in my hometown.
That's what all those cars are at the post office on Tuesday.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, so we made a little bit of room, more room for you all, if you would like to come up and have a seat now. And apologize that our council chambers is very small. Okay, so Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. So if there's something that's not already on the agenda, this is what this is for. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS, Arizona Revised Statutes 38, 43102H. And comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Okay, so is there anyone that wants to speak on an item that isn't on the agenda before I go through all these forms? Okay. If not, we'll close the floor to the public. Pardon? Oh, okay. Item number eight is Approval of the Minutes, Special Meeting of November 5, 2013, Work Session of November 12 and 19, 2013, and Regular Meeting of November 19, 2013. I read them thoroughly, and they look good to me. Any corrections or amendments?
I move to approve.
Okay, so Councilmember Ilinski made the motion. Councilmember Rodigie seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. For the consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is Special Event Liquor License Application for Aaron Rodiger, applicant for the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Arizona Chapter, for an event scheduled for May 14 and 15, 2014, at the Cottonwood Kids Park located at 3050 South 12th Street. And that's our only item. Does anybody want to pull that item for discussion? Does any member of the public want to pull that item for discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Councilmember Garrison made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is Approving an Amendment to Contract Number YAV 2132014 with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments for Additional CSBG Funds for Cottonwood Area Transit. And we have with us tonight our CAT Director. And thank you for sitting up here and making it a little bit more difficult to get up there. And I'm getting, so I always want to say Bruce Mauer, because I know another Bruce Mauer, but I know it's Bruce.
Madam Mayor and Council, we already have a contract with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments to provide low-income transit for our primarily paratransit folks that qualify under the NACOG grant for the Community Services Block 3. What they have done, they found some more money, and they'd like to give it to us to continue that program. It is enough money to almost double what they had granted to us before.
Awesome.
So that means that we'll be able to fund either more people or, for a longer period, the low income for our transit folks. It's something that's very much needed, it's very much used. We provide, well, you've seen the statistics, and I'm just getting them together for this month, and it's almost another thousand rides this month. Almost half of those are low-income rides. It is something that's very much used in our community.
So that provides a lot of rides for people that want to work and don't have transportation, for the elderly who have, need to get to doctor's appointments.
Right.
Get their groceries and prescriptions, and, just all kinds of situations.
All kinds of things. Even, we provide rides to people to go to the senior center, rec center, library, whatever they need to do. And by giving them this money for NACOG, it allows them to get on the bus for a dollar. And then, especially for our paratransit folks, that's less than half the price. And then NACOG takes up the rest of the bill. I bill them every month, and they send us a check.
We like that. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, this sounds like, Vice Mayor, can you help me out with this phrase?
No-brainer.
A no-brainer.
Imagine that.
Why wouldn't we accept it?
Well, that's kind of why I brought it to your attention.
If you want to offer me some money, I'd take it.
Exactly.
We like, we like those kinds of things. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Yes, ma'am, please come up to the lectern. I know it's hard to squeeze out of there.
Sorry, I have a question. I have two questions. One is, are you going to increase the stops for the individuals that use the CAT system? And the second question is, are you going to label the stops that are no longer stops for individuals such as developmentally disabled, that really cannot understand that the stop is no longer functioning?
We have a plan in place, and I haven't presented it to the council as yet, for adding another route. CAT is going to use all the stops that are currently not being used. There won't be any stops that are not going to be used.
So do you have any plans in your future to mark the stops that are not being used?
There aren't going to be any stops that are going to be used, so, and CAT will use them.
Awesome.
So we're all looking forward to that story, Bruce. That's exciting to hear.
Next council meeting.
Okay, all right, we'll be, we'll be all ready. So, okay, the public's had a chance to speak. Mr. Pratt, would you like to make a motion?
I move to accept the increased Community Service Block Grand Funding from NACOG for bus vouchers for low-income riders and to authorize the mayor to execute the revised negotiated service agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. Item number two is Resolution Number 2725, approving, ratifying the rates, fees, and charges at the solid waste transfer station and implementing a new fee for the recycling of certain electronic items. Morgan Scott?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. You might remember a few weeks ago, we were talking recycling, transfer station, and Waste Management did offer, in their best and final proposal, to provide recycling of electronic equipment at our transfer station. However, in their proposal, they had a few fees attached. Now, they are offering to pay, I think it's a four cents per pound on some electronic equipment, but the problem is, there's a huge variation. We kind of have a tendency to group electronic equipment. And they say, no, there's a huge variation. Quite a bit of electronic equipment, they will actually give the city a rebate at the rate of four cents per pound. However, there's quite a bit of other equipment that they will charge the city, two cents per pound.
I think it was five cents per pound.
Yeah, you're correct. I apologize.
Okay.
I apologize, I was mistaken.
That's all right.
What staff's recommending is that the city, as far as the two cents per pound, we allow citizens to drop off that equipment for free. And that money may come out of that five cents per pound rebate. However, what may be a larger financial burden is the $6 that will cost, and this is the large screen monitors, older-style TVs, computer monitors. Waste Management is charging us $6 to recycle all those. Staff would like to recommend to council, we go ahead and pass that fee on to the, on to the people dropping it off. Not increase it at all, so the city won't be making any money off of this, they'll just be passing Waste Management's fee on to the people who need to recycle those kind of items. And again, this is a $6 fee for, again, the older, large-screen TVs or computer monitors. I think we talked about this briefly the last time we talked about recycling, and we'd be bringing this fee back before you, and this is at hand.
Okay. So yes, you did. And so, to make it official, any questions or comments from members of the council on this item? Any questions or comments from members of the public on this particular item? Okay, and so everybody knows that recycling has changed from Sixth Street to Public Works, and that we are including electronics recycling every day that we're open. You can, so we probably, I'm guessing we won't be having the big recycling or electronics cleanups, because you can drop stuff off anytime the whole year. So you won't have to save it up in your garage or anything like that. So that's all a positive. I'm very excited. Now, there was glass, we were going to cover glass, right?
That's not it tonight's meeting, because we will be taking glass for free, Waste Management will be charging us for that.
Okay.
The city will be accepting glass for free.
Okay, so it's, that will not be passed on to the consumer?
No.
Or, okay.
Because that's not what the staff's recommending.
Right. Okay, so any other questions? Members of the public didn't have any questions, so I would entertain a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2725.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski made the motion. Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Morgan, thank you for all of your hard work on this. You've just really put a lot of time in on it, you know, and it's turning out very well, and we appreciate your work.
Not a problem, and I appreciate the patience. I know this is a difficult one to get through.
Thank you. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2725 by title only.
Resolution Number 2725, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, ratifying, setting rates, fees, and charges for the Cottonwood Solid Waste Transfer Station. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number three is Award of a Contract for Lease Purchase Financing for Arsenic Treatment Equipment. And is Mr. Luter here tonight?
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and take this one.
Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez was going to take this, but he had a family obligation he needed to go to.
Okay.
And, Madam Mayor, council members, as you'll recall, the council gave approval for staff to pursue the purchase of our arsenic treatment system at a cost of about $200 million, or $2 million.
Whoa!
It was a good decision. But by doing this, we end up saving about a half a million dollars in lease payments. And so our plan was to finance this, so we put it out for bids. We got just one bid back from Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, and with a five-year term and an interest rate of 1.58, which is obviously a very good interest rate. And so we are recommending to the council tonight to go ahead and approve the contract for the lease purchase of the equipment, arsenic equipment.
And if I recall from our past meetings, this is still, even with this contract, we're still saving?
Half a million dollars.
Yeah, over the five-year time period?
And it's even, Madam Mayor, it's even better than that. We are, with this five-year term, we were obligated for, to lease these systems, and at the end of this five-year period, there would have been a residual purchase in the millions of dollars. We paid the $2 million to buy out the lease, and with this lease purchase financing, the monthly payment is about the same, and at the end of the five-year term, the city owns the system.
Great. Okay, any comments from members of the public on this item? Any more questions or comments from, yes, yes, if you would come up to the lectern, please?
Just a quick one, is there maintenance to the system beyond the five years where there's additional costs that go into that, or as far as their cost of ownership?
Mr. Luter could probably answer that better, but essentially, staff maintains the systems currently. Here he comes.
Mention his name, and he comes out of door number three.
Thank you, thank you for allowing our public to have your seat.
The sound was bad back there. Could somebody repeat the question?
The cost of maintenance of the system.
After the five years, the question was, after the five years, what will the cost be?
The cost of maintenance on the system is probably going to be in the area of about, trying to remember that number, but I think we're paying about $300,000 for the salt, the commodities, the maintenance, and all that, which we were paying with the lease purchase also. So basically, what this will do is, this will lower the cost from, you know, close to $1 million a year, to probably down into $300,000 range. And now that we own the equipment, staff has already come up with some more efficiencies as far as hauling brown, some of the backwash, as council is aware, the backwash to the wastewater plant was causing issues. So we expect that cost to go down substantially. Now that we own it, we can make modifications that staff has discovered to operate it more efficiently.
So I remember when we first found out that we had to remediate arsenic, we were talking about $8 million to our state senators and representatives at that time.
Right. It was rather costly, and at the time, to purchase this equipment in 2007 was between $6 and $7 million. So the lease at that time was done, because we weren't sure where the arsenic industry was going. So all around, this was just a really good purchase for the city to lower the impact on our rate payers of the federally mandated but unfunded.
But unfunded. And then also, a couple of years ago, maybe three or four, we hired our own arsenic employee who was an expert at taking care of these systems.
Correct. The original deal with Basin Water, who was the company originally bought him from, was they were doing the water services agreement, because at that time, we were just fresh into the water industry. When they went through their bankruptcy, they basically defaulted on the water services agreement, so the city took over operation and maintenance of those facilities, which saved us quite a bit of money at that time. So we think we'll continue to save on this. It's unfortunate, but you can't fight the feds.
All right, okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I would entertain, let's see, what are we doing with this? I don't remember. Get back to it.
I move to award the contract for lease purchase financing to U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance Incorporated for the acquisition of arsenic treatment equipment and authorize staff to negotiate a final agreement for execution by the mayor. and authorize staff to negotiate a final agreement for execution by the mayor.
Second.
He was louder. Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is Ordinance Number 604, amending the municipal code by adding a new Title 16 civil unions. This is a first reading, so there will not be a vote tonight. What I would like to ask is that sometimes we have hot-button issues in the community and within the city. And a lot of times, we clap and do a lot of clapping for people making presentations and all of that. But what I would ask tonight is that you don't clap, because what happens is, you might have sort of a citizen that isn't comfortable with public speaking, and the clapping may make him or her so uncomfortable that they wouldn't feel the ability to go up and speak, they wouldn't have the courage, so if we can be respectful during our discussion, and I always remind everyone about the three Rs, respect for self, respect for others, and responsible for all your actions. So with that, we'll go to that item. And we have a number of speakers after we have our little presentation about it, and everybody will get their chance, their opportunity, and we have five minutes each if you need that much. If someone's already saying the same thing that you've already said, and you would like to go home tonight, maybe you can just say that I support so-and-so or whichever, make it quick if you can. But we are here to hear every person who wants to speak about this issue. So, our city attorney actually has kind of, I asked him to look at ordinances, we had a meeting in the council, asked him to look at the various ordinances, and we came up with, of the communities that have done something on this issue, our council liked the Sedona Plan the best. So, he rewrote it with Cottonwood in mind, the city of Cottonwood. Are there any comments that you wish to make?
Only if you wish, Madam Mayor, I could, I could give you a summary of what it accomplishes.
Right.
I could answer any questions, or I could...
So the summary, this information is, whatever the council is studying, it's always available on the website. So if you haven't already read what the ordinance is about, and sometimes it's really good to do that, it's available on the website. So if you go to cottonwoodaz.gov, and you click on council, and then you click on agendas, all of the background materials that we have are there for the public's perusal, and so everything we have, you have also. Okay, so, what?
Can I ask a good question?
Yes, Mr. Pratt.
And this was brought to me by someone who read the ordinance and was under the impression that we were going to have a reciprocity clause in our ordinance, something like, I guess, Clarkdale has, and this was brought to me by a citizen, so.
Right, Madam Mayor.
Said I would ask the question.
Mr. Pratt, we, I looked at that, and this can be the beginning of a conversation, and we can either incorporate that, or we can revisit that in an amendment, but that discussion surrounds finding a way to capture a definition of maybe what other jurisdictions have done, and then, and it's, it's a pretty minor thing, because I think our, the process laid out in this proposed ordinance is pretty streamlined already. And one thing you'll, we'll present to you tonight, and you can discuss, is whether or not there'll be a fee for registering these unions. And if the answer, as one of your options is, is not to impose any fee at all, that makes it even a more simple and painless process. So the thinking at that time was, it really is not a big deal for somebody who happens to be registered in another jurisdiction to come into the clerk's office, fill out the form, get the certified copy of the form, and they're done, and they're registered in Cottonwood as well. And what that avoided was the challenge of figuring out how to define the kind of union as defined by other jurisdictions that we would recognize, and just, we, sort of, our definition will control.
So, in reading through this, it does not take away from the state constitution where the voters voted that marriage is between one man and one woman, that, I mean, this ordinance does not take away from that law?
No, Madam Mayor, this doesn't reach that issue at all.
And this can be, this ordinance could be for same-sex couples, or it could be for opposite-sex couples, and it gives, it's just giving people in the community an opportunity very often, in some of these couples who have children, or they have, want to visit their significant other in the hospital. In the past, there's been a lot of discrimination against families, against people that wanted to be able to visit, and now the hospitals have actually, as long as the patient wants to see that person, I think they can sign anyone up, so there's no issue with our hospital on that, because they're already doing it. Really, a lot of these things, everybody's already doing them. But it will give an opportunity, some of the cities, I think Bisbee, correct me if I'm wrong, Bisbee actually takes the documents, or do they not?
That's right, Madam Mayor.
So Bisbee actually takes the documents that the people bring, but what we thought was that that makes them a public record, and maybe that's not the best thing. So, we'll just be doing a list of documents that are important to that, to those people. So, they can list, make a list of things like agreements between parties regarding the management and ownership of real and personal property. They can do agreements between parties regarding the obligations that either or both may have agreed to assume regarding the existing children or other family members of one or both of the parties. They will be, have agreements, be able to have a list of agreements between the parties regarding the obligations that either or both may have agreed to, assuming, agreed to assume regarding prospective children of one or both of the parties. They will have the opportunity to make a list of agreements between the parties regarding the disposition of their property upon their, upon the death of either person. They can have agreements for resolving any disputes that may arise should the relationship dissolve through alternative dispute resolution procedures and otherwise. The documents that establish any other rights or obligations that may be legally exchanged by and between the parties. Those were some things that I had checked off in my reading.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just put that description, which is accurate in context, the ordinance doesn't authorize the creation of those agreements?
Right.
Or...
The validity of them.
To the validity of them, it simply allows a description of the, those kinds of relationships that parties have entered into to be registered with the clerk. And the fact of the existence of those agreements simply becomes a record with the clerk.
Okay. So, basically, that's nothing, and this chapter shall be interpreted to contravene the general laws of the state of Arizona, which shall supersede any conflicting provisions herein. Anything else that any of you read here that you want to comment on, or? Let's see.
I was happy with it.
Okay. All right, so if there's no comments from the council, we'll start hearing the public's comments, and Bob Windsor will be our first speaker. And if you would just come up, and we really want to know if you live inside the city limits of Cottonwood or outside the city limits, so if you would share that information with us, please.
Thank you, Madam Council, and Madam Mayor, and the council, plus the public behind me, my name is Bob Windsor, I live outside the city limits, I live in Birdie Village. And although I am a member of several organizations here locally, I'm not representing those organizations, this is my own feeling here tonight. I'd like to start out by addressing the fact that I'm a practicing Christian, I have been for over 35 years, that we have no, we have nothing against any person, their personal views. I am a Bible reader and have been for a number of years. My only concern about this is it is against what God's word says, He loves everyone also. Some of the actions that might be promoted in a civil union is the fact that it is against His law. Because I do believe in God and Jesus Christ, I think it's against the way I feel too. I want to reiterate the fact that this has nothing to do with any type of individual, choices of what they make, this is on their own shoulders, but I think it's in the best interests of Cottonwood and the city and the people here to not carry on this, or not go ahead and recommend this civil union. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Frank Navarres? So if you could, and some folks live inside or outside the city limits, but you can also also share that you work inside the city limits, whatever your relationship is with the city, if you care to share it.
Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for this time. My name is Frank Navarres, I pastor in church here in Cottonwood, Arizona. I am from the city, within the city limits, and my issues, which are several, but two in particular, are based on the way this is written, and when I look at the ordinance where it says justifications, benefits, and issues, it states, "In reality, the proposed ordinance is rather innocuous, and does not require anyone to alter or compromise their own beliefs about same-sex partnership in any way." Above that, it talks about how we want to lessen the impact of discriminatory practices against the member of the LGBT community, which I happen to agree with, I don't have a problem with that. But my question is simply this, and my issue is, we have throughout the states, especially in New Mexico and also in Washington, where when an ordinance was passed similar to this, when the same-sex couple decided to go and recite their commitment vows, they went and they asked in the state of New Mexico, a florist, and the state of Washington, a photographer, to participate in the event. They both said no because of their religious beliefs. That then started a litigation, and the same-sex couples went ahead and they sued the individual who said, "No, I'm not going to participate." They lost, and my question for me is simply this, because it talks about city facilities. If someone, let's say, wants to go and make their commitment vows to each other, same-sex couple here in Cottonwood, and they want to go to Riverfront, and they call me or one of the pastors here in town to do it, and we say no because of our religious beliefs, are we then open for litigation? See, and no one's been able to answer that for me up to this point. Now, I know it talks about certain benefits, but it also talks about discrimination against. Now, how far is that discrimination going to go, and that's my question. Secondly, my other issue is, I don't understand where the voice of the people is being left out in this process, meaning this, in Sedona, in Jerome, in Clarkdale, in Bisbee, and in Tucson, everything went through the judicial system. The voice of the people, meaning a vote, a ballot, was not taking place. If you look at the history of this, of this country, in most states where they have passed this ordinance or a proposition other than New York, it was done through the judicial system, it would not be of the voice of the people. And I just don't understand why the voice of the people, meaning a ballot vote, is being eliminated from the process. So, that's my concern. I too, as this gentleman said behind me, I'm not against any person that has a tendency towards, whatever you may want to call it. I have several individuals from the gay community that come to my church. We love them, we support them, we'll do whatever. It's not my position to change them, it's the word of God that changes them. My position is just to minister God's word to them. But I want to make sure that if I say no, if this ordinance is passed, if I say no, I'm not going to perform the civil unions' commitment vows or whatever they're going to be doing, that I'm not open for litigation. And the way I read this, there's a strong possibility I may. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Do you have any comment on that, or is there any way that it could be written that he wouldn't feel that kind of?
Madam Mayor, as the council and knows, and the pastor probably knows, lawyers are notorious for not giving answers quite as direct as the pastor's question about guaranteeing no litigation in the United States. We're a wonderfully litigious country. What I can say is, there's nothing in this ordinance that would alter the calculation or make anybody any more likely to be on the receiving end of what the pastor describes as a very frivolous lawsuit.
The same, though, in New Mexico, as well as Washington. And so, that's where I'm coming from, and it's happened in other places. The verbiage was rather general, when you say lessen the discrimination, I mean, again, what does that mean to, how far does that extend? And if you have a couple, they may take it as far as they want, and it's happened. And my concern that it's going to happen here and to me.
And Madam Mayor, I'll just, I'll just speak to that, I don't want to belabor the point, but the ordinance was not intended to and does not, in fact, create any substantive rights of the kind the pastor is expressing a concern about. It just doesn't make it any more or less likely than that somebody would approach him and ask him to conduct that kind of ceremony, or that they would bring litigation if he were to say no.
Whether or not, whether or not we had an ordinance?
The presence or absence of this ordinance has, has no bearing on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate them. Mr. Pease, Jack Pease, Pastor Pease, I think? So if you would state your, I've already stated your name, because it's right here, and I think you are a resident of Cottonwood.
Yes, I am. Madam Jones, Mayor Jones, city council, my name is Jack Pease, I live in Cottonwood Ranch, and my purpose as a concerned citizen is to speak to the issue of civil unions. There is no animosity whatsoever against homosexuals. However, I strongly object to their agenda, which is contrary to the Judeo-Christian agenda values and beliefs, teachings what our nation has stood on from its foundations. The wise men said, "Remove not the ancient landmarks which your fathers have said." When the definition of marriage is destroyed, what will be the next combination forced upon us? The same, for some of us, there is no middle ground. It is God's institution of marriage, one man, one woman. It was ordained by God long before there was any church or any government, one man and one woman. We believe the homosexual Joe, goal is to change what God ordained, thus forcing us to accept a lifestyle unnatural and contrary to nature. This is an affront, I think, to humanity and the common good of society. Under the statement why the council recommends Ordinance 64, in second page, under justification and benefits, the proposed autumn, pardon, ordinance says, "It does not require anyone to alter or compromise their beliefs." To accommodate this agenda, it does so demand us to compromise beliefs and values, let me name four of them that I can think of right away. First area is our religious freedom. Many government officials do oppose our biblical stance. And the U.S. Commissioner of the Equal Employment Opportunities stated, "There can be a conflict between religious liberties and sexual liberties, but in most all cases, the sexual liberties should win." We see where he stands. Illinois' so-called Religious Freedom in Marriage Act contains threatening languages for churches, synagogues, ministers who oppose same-sex marriage. Ocean Grove Christian Camp in New Jersey was charged and sued by denying a lesbian ceremony in its worship pavilion. Arizona Republic 9/11/13 tells about a minister who insisted the changing of churches' historical Arizona Republic 9/11/13 tells about a minister who insisted the changing of churches' historical biblical teachings by performing a gay wedding for his gay son. Pages sticking together. Second area has to do with our children. TV programs, movies, newspapers, magazines expose our children, our most valuable resource, to an environment hostile to traditional family beliefs and values. Many government schools are guilty. They teach that two moms and two dads are equal or better than a male and female parent. Case in point, students in California were required to take a field trip to witness a lesbian wedding. Massachusetts Department of Education required teachers to instruct students about alternative families, including same-sex couples. Courts prohibited children out of these classes, and teachers had to comply or they would lose their position. The third area is our personal beliefs. Isn't it ironic that those who embrace Judeo-Christian values are threatened with hate crime when they speak out, but the gay community is being accommodated and even in many places praised for coming out? A California judge, a homosexual himself, overturned the will of seven million citizens who were not in favor of marriage defined as one man and one woman. He said, "Christian beliefs may be harmful to those who engage in homosexual behavior." Military chaplains, an institution started or founded by George Washington, is under threat. Chaplains are reprimanded and could be forced to leave the military for openly agreeing or disagreeing with homosexual demands. The fourth area is what the gay movement, I think, is doing to our nation, what all of this is doing. For instance, some Catholic charities, due to their biblical stance, must close adoption centers because it is wrong for them to place children in same-sex union homes. In Michigan, a graduate student was expelled from her counseling program because she had convictions concerning the Bible.
Pastor Pease? The buzzer went off. I don't know if you heard it.
Okay, but let me say, I do agree with Pastor Frank that I think this should be brought before a board, or before the public as a vote. But if we're, and all these things all over the country have found that we're called beneathers, unchristian, unconcerned, and unconcerned about people. And I don't think, I do think that we will have to change our beliefs if these things are happening. And civil unions is only the next step to same-sex marriage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Jay Parkison?
Council members and Madam Mayor, thank you very much. My name's Jay Parkison, and I live outside the city of Cottonwood. And I do some work inside the city and have been a longtime participant and involved in our community and the entire Verde Valley. Overall, I wanted to state my opposition to acceptance of this. I hear people claiming that there's a need at this time. I would point out that there was a recent pride event here in Cottonwood. I was welcomed by merchants, by citizens, by you, Madam Mayor, I believe, so I would have to think that we showed what kind of accepting, tolerant people we are here. And the Verde Valley was exemplary of what we had going on there. So I don't think there's blatant discrimination, there were no roadblocks put up or anything like that. Is there day-to-day discrimination going on? Possibly, against everyone. All of us are subject to that at times. We already have solutions in place, as mentioned, over at the hospital. I know people on the Board of Directors. That hospital is run in a caring, compassionate way. There are already legal tools in place, medical directives, powers of attorney, et cetera. There are already several tools in place so that there are no roadblocks or barriers put up to keep someone from visiting someone in the hospital or having to say so in their treatment or anything else, as offered up as an excuse for this at times. I also heard that the city would become a repository, so to speak, of the different documents that are acceptable to us. So if documents are presented to the city, a civil union that occurred somewhere else, say Bisbee or Clarkdale or whatever, and then there's a dissolution, then is it the city's obligation to make sure that those notices are filed in the other cities? What's our stance there? Why are we waiting into this quagmire? Why do we need more bureaucracy in our lives? Excuse me. It would seem to me, from my perch, it seems like you have a solution looking for a problem and trying to stir it up so that you can apply that. I would say this is the wrong tactic, and also I would say as well, we should take it to the voters rather than just this few people. I'm glad there are people here participating on all sides, talking about it, but let's get a bigger audience. This is an important thing for our area. I mean, exactly as your sign says, this is the heart of the Verde Valley, it's not Sedona. So let's keep that in mind, guys, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next commenter is Bradley Blalock.
Good evening, honorable City Council of Cottonwood and Cottonwood Public International listeners. Thinking of the heart of Verde Valley, I just wanted to invite you to take a deep breath, place your hand on your heart. Breathe from your feet, to the heavenly stars, to the center of your heart. Just take a moment, take a breath, feel that connection. So I'm a fourth-generation Arizonan, nothing on the natives. But I can only speak for myself as an individual, given that the LGBTQ community is one of the most diverse on the planet. So I just wanted to say that my grandfather, Jack Lanton, he dedicated the park across from Riot with the Shriners. He was on the first sales team for APS. And, you know, when I was five years old, I said, "Mom, there's too many people on the planet, and some of us need to take a break." And he said, "You know, I think we have a problem here." But when I was 22, I had a partner that tried to commit suicide. I found him just in time in a cave that I was guided to. I didn't know where he was, and he tried to commit suicide. And when I found him, he was blue. He did so because he was ashamed about his sexuality. I brought him up to the light, and I held him, and I said, "You belong, people love you." And we got him to the paramedics just in time. He passed on on the way there. They revived him. They let me visit him in the hospital, and my grandfather came to visit, and my grandmother did too, him, and just told him that they loved him and that he belonged. We did four days of Reiki on him. He survived, a combination of the balance between allopathic medicine and preventative health. And so I just want to say that, you know, I hung out with Patch Adams. I went to a workshop with my Auntie Sasha in Little Thelton. He said, "The greatest cause of psychosis is the sense of not belonging." Well, I want to say that I've had to reclaim over and over that I belong, that we belong, and take gender out of the equation because it's illegal to, in some native cultures, there's eight different words for gender variants. Zuni call us the Weebod, and they were actually considered sacred people, that were the balance between masculine and feminine. They often were a council, they could babysit children when parents were out hunting or making things. You know, they could be a balance between the spiritual world and the physical world. You know, I just want to say that, you know, without, if you, I mean, one of the great things about religion is it brings community together, it brings a place where people can honor the dead, to create funds for people that are in need. But when you use religion to do tribal warfare against people, against violence that belong, to create a climate of violence, to say that they don't belong, that they don't belong as loving, responsible parents, or loving, responsible, being a loving, responsible couple, you know, to actually say that they don't belong and to dehumanize them over and over and do so legally, is not a right path to go because there's bigger problems that we all need to get united on. There's a Pacific Ocean here suffering from radiation poisoning, and the church could be spending that time enrolling scientists and creating a solution rather than creating this tribal warfare of hate, you know? Stop. Choose love. If you choose love, love is love, oppression is oppression, where you can find a balance. You know, you can take that, you can create a tribal warfare of violence, and then we're left with a choice of internalizing that with addiction, escapism, or inflicting it back, or avoiding it like water around a stone, or transforming it. This Verde Valley has this rich opportunity right now to be a major part of transforming it, be a symbol of transforming it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are you inside the city or outside?
I'm living, well, I've been working at Sedona Rouge, as a massage therapist. I'm also a musician. I've opened for John Collins and Mary Williamson at the Sedona International Film Festival. Humbly, I can say, you know, I've seen UN World Leaders, they come back to visit me at Sedona Rouge. So I'll just give a little background, but I'm living in Finland right now, and so I hope to, I'm an expat. I think there is amazing things about America that it only can be improved, you know? I hope to be in both places on the planet.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Gary Bartow?
I'm Gary Bartow. I live in Unit Six of the Verde Village. I go to church in downtown Cottonwood. Work with the Verde Valley caregivers, so I'm in Cottonwood. Cottonwood is my city, even though the city limit sign is not there.
Thank you for your services to the caregivers.
I'm not representing them, I just meant that I work in Cottonwood through them. I'm going to speak to the moral issue here just a little bit. What does God have to say about what happens to a city that commits the sin of homosexuality? In the first book of the Bible, we call it Genesis, it's also the first book of the Pentateuch of the Jewish Bible, and I'm going to quote from Chapters 13 and 19. I'm just going to give portions of this rather than read it all because of the timeframe on it. Abram went from Egypt with his wife and nephew Lot to the Negev, that's the south country, for he was rich in cattle and silver and gold. He went as far as Bethel. Now Lot also had lots of cattle, and there was not enough pasture for the both herds. So the herdsman began to have strife between them. So Abram said to Lot, "Please separate me, separate from me, and you go left, and if you go right, I will go the other direction." Lot lifted his head and saw the wonderful green valley where the cities of Sodom and Gomorrah were, and he moved his head as far as Sodom. Now two angels, I don't know if you believe in angels or not, but the Bible says this, "Two angels came to Lot, and because of the wickedness in the valley to destroy the cities, the men of the city of Sodom tried to rape the angels. Lot tried to protect them, but the angels told Lot and his family to escape for their lives. Lot was reluctant to leave, and the angels grabbed him, his wife, and his two daughters, and pulled them from the city and said, 'Don't even look back for your lives.'" Then God rained fire and brimstone on the cities to destroy them completely, while running Lot's wife could not resist, and she looked back. Because of her disobedience, God turned her into a pillar of salt. God destroyed the cities of Sodom and Gomorrah. I don't know if Cottonwood and Clarkdale, any of these are any different than it was in the Bible. God hasn't changed, we have. So I'd like to summarize what that said in my own words. In Genesis, I call this a lot, a lot. In Genesis, we have a lot of stuff about Lot and Abraham. Lot got into a lot, a lot of trouble because he chose a lot of green pasture that was on a huge lot so he could feed a lot of grass to a lot of cattle. Meanwhile, Abram consulted God and got a lot of help selecting the rest of the land. God gave him a whole lot of land because he trusted God a lot. Since Lot did not seek God, he got a huge lot of pasture, but he got a whole lot of evil fellows that lived there. There was a lot of Sodomites in Sodom where the lot of them had turned their backs on God. So God gave them a lot of fire and brimstone, and Lot was wiped out. A lot of Lot's possessions was burned up as well. Lot was out a lot, including his wife, who looked back, looked away from Lot and looked back a lot and got turned into a lot of salt. Lot and Lot's two girls did not take a lot of chances and ran a lot to escape. The moral of the story is to trust God a lot. Cottonwood does not want a lot of brimstone and fire to concern the lots in Cottonwood, along with lots of people.
Much for your comments. Okay, Judy Cowan is the next commenter. Is Judy here? Yeah. Okay.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I've been here before, and I'm in opposition. My name is Judy Cowan. I'm retired Lieutenant Commander of the United States Navy. I live in Cottonwood. I'm hoping that the people behind me can hear me.
It's hard, I know.
It is difficult. I entered nursing in 1959. That makes me a very good woman. And became a nurse anesthetist in 1969. The operating room was my field every day. I don't even think I missed two days of work in 45 years. But complacency and apathy can be deadly to individuals in society. Therefore, I stand before you. In the written proposal for civil unions under justification, the statement read, "In reality, the proposed ordinance is rather innocuous and does not require anyone to alter or compromise their own beliefs about same-sex partnerships in any way." Well, we know nothing is innocuous. So I would like, from my years of experience, 45 years, I would like to give you some history and some analogy. Things expand exponentially. They start small, and before you know it, there's a lot of effect. On June 5th, 1981, an article concerning five previously healthy young gay men in Los Angeles was diagnosed with a PCP, that's pneumocystis cariniain pneumonia. And it's an infection that usually appears only in individuals with substantial immune system damage. It appeared in the morbidity and mortality weekly report of the Centers for Disease Control. That seemingly minor, small report, of course, was a start of what was eventually to be known as Acquired Immunodeficiency Syndrome, which is AIDS, AIDS. And it's caused by the HIV virus, which is Human Immunodeficiency Virus. And never in history, with any disease, any bacteria, any virus, has any one disease had such an impact, causing multiple changes in everyday activities of hospitals, clinics, and medical offices. In the very early 60s, when I started my nursing, I washed out bloody sponges with my hands, bare hands, no gloves. I washed needles, I sharpened needles, and we reused them and we re-autoclaved. We didn't have gowns and masks. We had ones that you re-washed, and the cost was way down. There was no such thing as universal control. Now, everybody, universal precautions. If you're not hospital-oriented, that means that we take extra, extra precaution when we're working with a patient. But the onset of AIDS... of AIDS in the early 80s, and I was here at Verde Valley Medical Center when we had our first case in 1983. The hospital found the necessity for the staff to use universal precautions on those patients they thought were at risk. We had to have special containers for our needles, our medical waste. And then, I would say, not longer than six years or seven years later, then we had HIPAA. And everybody is familiar with HIPAA. It is what caused us to, it was a necessity because of the privacy issues. Again, it's because of the AIDS diagnosis that we have this big privacy issue in hospitals. It was started because of AIDS. People did not want to see, have other people see their record that said they were diagnosed with AIDS. Before that, before 1980, 85, you could come into a hospital, you could bring in 10 of your family members. It was okay. But with the AIDS diagnosis, it caused a cost that was exponential, a cost that continues to be today, and a, and an effect that AIDS has on the HIPAA violation. We've caused it ourselves, but this is what caused it. Anyway, it has raised the healthcare cost.
If you could.
And I want to, and I want to say that, no, we're not talking about AIDS here tonight. But we are talking about a deviated sexual behavior that is going to increase it. And when you do get AIDS, the amount of money is between $2,500 and $10,000 a month for treatment. That's a lot of money. If we live by God's laws, we probably wouldn't have any of these situations.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next is David Dufar? Is it David?
David.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Honorable members of the council, I hope everybody can hear me. I live outside Cottonwood. I work here, work through here sometimes. I work as a tour guide through the area and my area is history. I didn't actually plan to come here tonight. I was calling a friend of mine to see if he was free and wanted to come and visit. And he told me he was coming, and I felt like I had to come. And I didn't really know where to start until I heard the last speaker. You see, my sister was on Reagan's AIDS commission and produced a report that debunked a lot of the hysteria around AIDS. You don't get it from a toothbrush or a toilet seat. You don't get it from shaking hands, from hugging, from loving people. You do get it from transmitting large amounts of bodily fluids. So, yeah, there is something. But when you have somebody with AIDS, you don't have to be afraid of hugging them, loving them, and telling them that it's okay, that they're part of the human race. When I came here, it was because of a very human issue, and one that I, that interfaces with governmental policies all the time. See, I'm a divorced father. And it's a, it's considered normal and a precondition to marriage and divorce that if you're going to get divorced, there must be a fight. And the woman must get the children, the house, the car, and would you like fries with that. And every other country song that you can think of is involved with that. And today, we're seeing a movement toward something else, toward, toward shared parenting, the assumption of shared parenting. What, this isn't that subject. We're not here to discuss that tonight. But we are, what I do want to just call to attention is that we often miss something in the hysteria on a subject like this. We just saw this with the Violence Against Women Act that was passed, which gives the right to women to, to kidnap their children under certain circumstances, but does not give the same rights to men under those same circumstances. We get, we get distracted by the emotion of things sometimes. We get distracted by our beliefs, our belief systems too. When we talk about this place being created, or the United States being created by Judeo-Christian beliefs, they were present. But they were also present in a time that was several hundred years after Descartes, who broke the, broke the old stranglehold on the idea that you had to go to the Bible for everything. He was, he was the one that split the world into belief and knowledge and said, you could look in the horse's mouth to find out how many teeth it had. He created, he enabled science and the way of science in this world that we live in today. Similarly, we believed, by the time this country was built, that all men were created equal. We fought a war over that, a civil war because of a little loophole, a digression between our, our words in our enabling documents and our beliefs. And it took some time for it to play out. John Thomas Jefferson was said to be a hypocrite because he had slaves. But there was, there were laws, there were laws, the kinds of things that you have to deal with here today, laws. And we are a nation of laws. Those laws come from the Constitution, and then to the states, then to you here. And while some people say, well, it's innocuous, or some people say, we have to, we have to, we have to go to other people, it's really you, it's really on your shoulders. You're the Pontius Pilots of today, you know? It does, it does rest with you. And your power does come from above you, but not from something that can't be seen, but by something that can be read, our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, our state and local laws. Thank you for.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mary Maguire. If there's anybody else that wants to speak, please just grab a form and drop them off at the corner there and they'll get passed up. Mrs. Maguire.
Hi. I live outside of Cottonwood. Madam Mayor, councilmen and women, and all present here, there are two points I'd like to consider tonight. The people of Arizona have already voted that the definition of marriage in this state is between one man and one woman, and you've already mentioned that. As it says in Genesis 2:24, "That is why a man leaves his father and mother and clings to his wife, and the two of them become one body." In my opinion, this issue should be brought to the entire community for a vote, just as the people in the state of Arizona voted, vetoed civil union marriages. The majority of the people in Cottonwood would likely also vote for this proposal. An issue of this magnitude with such moral implications for the entire community should be presented to the voters and not just the members of the council. I am here personally because I love these people who have same-sex attraction. And because I love them, I want to remind them and us that homosexual acts are not acceptable by God or in natural law. The following Bible passages illustrate this point. "For this reason, God gave them up to dishonorable passions. Their women exchanged natural relations for unnatural, and the men likewise gave up natural relations with women and were consumed with passion for one another. Men committing shameless acts with men and receiving in their own persons that do penalty for their error." 1 Timothy 1:8 through 10. "Now we know that the law is good. If anyone uses it lawfully, understanding this, that the law is not laid down for the just, but for the lawless and disobedient, for the ungodly and sinners, for the unholy and profane, for murderers of fathers and murderers of mothers, for manslayers, immoral persons, sodomites, kidnappers, liars, perjurers, and whatever else is contrary to sound doctrine." Jude 7. "Just as Sodom and Gomorrah and the surrounding cities, which likewise acted immorally and indulged in unnatural lust, serve as an example by undergoing punishment of eternal fire." Natural law is important as well. People have a basic ethical intuition that certain behaviors are wrong because they are unnatural. We perceive intuitively that the natural sex partner of a human is another human, not an animal. The same reasoning applies to the case of homosexual behavior. The natural sex partner for a man is a woman, and the natural sex partner for a woman is a man. Thus, people have the corresponding intuition concerning homosexuality that they do about bestiality, that it is wrong because it is unnatural. There are many arguments that one can expound on here tonight. But in the end, it's the soul that is at stake for all our brothers and sisters who struggle with same-sex attraction. Our final destinations are not here on earth, but either in heaven or in hell, and that is my main concern for them. And I am asking that this ordinance, number 604, not be passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jen Morris.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. I think I just would like to speak about bringing what we're here for, which is a human issue. I've heard a lot about AIDS and, and all kinds of opinions, and that's good to hear. But I just think we should remind everybody that, you know, what the issue is. This benefits a lot of retirees too, domestic couples. You know, my kids call me Ma Bear. They call their mom Mom. And although some people said, you know, the hospitals, pediatrics, whatever, you can, you know, don't worry, there's things in place for that, to go see your family. Some do and some don't. I'm a little shaky over it, obviously. But, you know, I fill out things all the time, so I can be safe to go see my kids or my partner, you know, if they're sick or injured or anything. Sometimes I have to show my ID to those that even know me because they have to ask me if I need to go see my children or my partner. So this isn't about AIDS or, to me, AIDS or things like that. This is about simply being able to feel safe with, you know, my community, my hospitals, my schools, and so that I can go safely go see my people that are my family. And that's important to me. So I just think we should bring it back to what you were reading about, things that, you know, that it says on the, on the website. It's a human issue, is all I would like to bring it back to. And I think we need to remember that. Not just a gay issue, it is a human issue. So that's very important. And I just, I needed to come up and say that and remind people that that's what we're here for, simply to, you know, do the same things everyone else does. You know, I have my family too, just like a lot of people here. And I want to feel just as secure in protecting them and myself. So that's really all I had to say. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura Carlson?
Hello. I'm a citizen of Cottonwood and a small business owner. And I'm also the vice president of the Sedona Verde Valley Pride Association. And I hadn't intended to speak when I came here tonight, but I just felt a calling to come up here and let you all look at the face of someone who's impacted by this, and all the other people in this room, which I won't point out, point out because of their own privacy, that you are looking at the faces of that will be directly impacted by this ordinance. So I wanted to call your attention to that. Further, I wanted to bring us back to, as Jen just did when she spoke, to the laws that govern our state and the laws that govern our nation, which demand that we separate church and state. So religion has no bearing on this conversation. Just let that one sink in for a second. This is about allowing people the same civil liberties regardless of what their sexual orientation is, who they choose to love. And that's it. I understand this is a really hot topic for everyone. People get really worked up when you start talking about religion and how it comes into, you know, affecting our laws, you know? And it's important to people to make their voices heard. But I just think that it doesn't have a bearing on this conversation because we're talking about morality versus religion. And people can bring that conversation to a number of different places that we've seen tonight, talking about death and AIDS and all kinds of other things that are horrible to think about. Doesn't matter. The point is that every person should be allowed to love who they choose and to marry who they choose, whether you want to call it a marriage or civil union, whatever we choose to call that legally. It's our responsibility to ensure the civil liberties of all people in this country, because that's the founding fathers that created our country intended for that to happen. So this is one of the last groups within this country that's legally okay to discriminate against. And how is that okay? How is that our right? As leaders? I'm a leader, just as you are. It's not our right. And it's our responsibility to stand up for those people and to say, I recognize that you, as a human being, have a right to have a union with whomever you choose, as long as it's a consenting adult. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine, can you help me with your last name, how to say it correctly? But thank you very much, Catherine.
Well, thank you so much for bringing this topic to the chambers. I had different ideas of where to start with this. I am a mom, first of all, and throughout my son's upbringing, it was very difficult to know whether or not my partner was going to be able to visit. And yes, we have big organizations that have worked for establishing rights in some kind of levels. I worked for United Airlines for over 10 and a half years. And over 20 years ago, they already had some type of partnership implemented where you could be safe to know that if something happened to you and you couldn't just sign a piece of paper before an accident, your established partner could go and visit you. But you always struggle. And that's where having civil union established on the town, on the city where you live, which I live here, is so important. My son is already 18 years old, and I don't have to worry about that. But my immediate family, blood family, they don't live here. They live in other states and other countries. So if something was to happen to me at this point in time, fact is whether or not it's a male or a female, that person couldn't go in. Because if I get into a car accident, unless someone really knows me personally, they won't allow anyone else. And I don't have a direct blood relative in here that can go assist me. So it is really difficult, and it affects heterosexual couples as well as me being a lesbian, because I can't go register myself as being with someone. And the fact of the matter is, is that what's on the table is not belief system, it's factual. A belief system is always true to those people that have. A belief system is always true to those people that have beliefs in religion, in a superpower, whatever they want to call it. That belief system is going to be true to them regardless because it's what they believe to be true. But true and fact is the same. Belief system is what you create for unison, and it is true to the people that practice it. But the fact of the matter is that when you need compassion, regardless what religion you practice, you share that compassion to one another. And what scares everybody is the unknown. So having civil unions is pretty much being true to thy neighbor because you want to tell them, "Hi, I am so-and-so." And what scares most people is not knowing who you are. That's their fear. So many people hid what they were for so many years that you build some kind of fearfulness to, "Who are these gay people? This is the face of a gay woman, that I've always been out. My parents tried to kill me because I were gay because it was a cultural fact. However, I still was out. Mom, Dad, this is who I am, this is who my partner is." And they expressed their belief and their actions, they took actions. I am a survivor of abuse, and that's okay with me because I don't have to hide behind anything else. This is the face, this is who I am, and this is who I love. And if you know who I am, I have been a mechanic, I have been in many different fields, I have worked in the hospitals, and there's many different things. But if you hide behind something else and you portray something you're not, how can you be honest to even yourself? And this impacts the man and a woman that don't really want to go get married. They just want to live together, they don't want to do the hassle of that paperwork, but they believe on their love because a marriage on a piece of paper is not going to keep you there in a household and making it a loved one. What is going to be affected throughout a lifetime is the truth and how you live with those around you. And so to me, this topic is so important just because it's factual. Are you willing to be truthful to your community? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jalen Peters?
Thank you for letting me speak. Sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather, so if my voice is not so awesome, I apologize. I live in Clarkdale, I've been in Cottonwood and Clarkdale area for just over 20 years. And I'm a pastor here in Cottonwood, although I represent myself and my family, my personal beliefs. I just wanted to mention a few things in opposition to this ordinance as well, kind of going along the lines of what others that are opposed have already said, but this, civil unions, I believe it violates natural law. There's no ability to procreate. The purpose of a family is to build a family and to have children. I understand that some people can't have children, even in a heterosexual marriage, and, but I know that that is, the purpose is to have a family. I know that's one of the, one of the oppositions I have to it. It also denies a child, either a father or a mother. I heard the lady previously talk about how their child calls them, calls one Mom and Momma Bear, I believe. I don't, maybe I'm mistaken.
If you would just address the council and not speak to anyone in the audience personally. Thank you.
So, you know, it denies a child, a child, either a father or a mother, which I feel is very, it's not good for a family union, unit. It validates and promotes the heterosexual, homosexual lifestyle. It turns a moral wrong into a civil right. I believe, obviously, in the Bible, as absolute truth, we can discuss truth, and what is truth? Who's making it up? It's got to come from somewhere, and I believe that if we, as, as life progresses and as society progresses, quote-unquote progresses, truth is going to change. And what's it going to look like 10 years from now? What, what's the argument going to be made for bestiality, pedophilia, incest? What's it going to look like? It's a slippery slope, and I believe that probably in all those cases, arguments, valid arguments could be made, that that's who they want to be with, and they should be allowed to be with that person. And it's morally wrong. It doesn't create, civil unions don't create families, but it creates a natural, sterile union. It defeats the state's purpose of benefiting marriages. There's no benefit to marriages anymore between a man and a woman and the family units, building a family. It opposes its acceptance, it imposes its acceptance on all society, period. As a pastor, I do feel similar to some arguments made earlier as far as what, what's going to stop a homosexual couple to, from suing me if I don't want to participate in conducting a marriage? What's going to stop them? Nothing. It's not written in there, anything that will stop them, and there's not written anything that is for them. So they can do that. I've read all the articles, I've seen all the stories in these states that have been mentioned earlier. It's the cutting edge of sexual revolutions. I want to read just a quick excerpt. "If homosexual marriage is universally accepted as the present step in sexual freedom, what logical arguments can be made or used to stop the next steps from incest, pedophilia, like I mentioned? The railroading of same-sex marriage on the American people makes increasingly clear what homosexual activist Paul Varnell wrote in the Chicago Free Press. 'The gay movement, whether we acknowledge it or not, is not a civil rights movement, not even a sexual liberation movement, but a moral revolution aimed at changing people's view of homosexuality.'" There's an obvious agenda behind this. It's not a movement, it's basically a ploy to change people's mindset on homosexuality. I did want to say, I believe my time is probably almost up, and I'm going out on a limb here, but I feel like I need to say it. To me, moral, the morality of it, truth is truth, whether someone else says it's not truth or not. I have no way, I can't change what, what truth is, just because I, I could say that wind doesn't exist because I don't see it, but it still exists. And what is right, what is true is will always be true, and, and what I mean by this is that we, as pastors, as Christians, we, I will, I will love people all day long, but I believe that it is wrong, just like any other sin, and I'm willing to even offer to anybody my services to pray and even counsel. And that could be going out on a limb, and I understand that, but I feel like it would be a disservice to not offer that tonight. So, yeah, I'm in.
Thank you very much. Cherie Anderson?
Madam Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Cherie Anderson, I live right outside the Cottonwood city limits.
So if everybody could be respectful of the speakers, please?
I work here in Cottonwood, but I live right outside the city limits. I didn't really have a plan to speak here tonight, but I was pretty compelled to speak after listening to others speak. Kind of go along with what some of the others said, it is just like a human matter, it's a love matter, it's not a religious matter. It's separation of church and state. I think that should be taken into account. A couple other people have mentioned that. I think it's quite valid. To go on about AIDS and all this other crazy stuff is just absurd to me. We're talking about a civil union. We're not talking about bestiality, pedophilia. We just want to let people who want to be together, consenting adults, be together and have the rights. People were talking about marriage, we're not here talking about marriage. We are here talking about civil unions, so civil unions is what needs to be addressed. I have personal beliefs that I feel like people are born the way they're born. Your God made you your way, my God made me my way. It could be the same God, it could be different, it could not even be a God. Regardless, I am here, and I feel compelled to love who I love, regardless of the gender. I feel like that should be accepted. I don't feel like I should be tolerated. I'm not gum on your shoe. I'm a person, I don't need to be tolerated, but I need to be identified as a human being. I think allowing civil unions is the least that we can do. As far as people claiming, "Oh, if civil unions are allowed, my personal beliefs are going to be changed." One gentleman said something to the effect that he felt like his personal beliefs, his personal religion would be changed if civil unions were allowed. I, I don't think that there's a dispensary of gays, that once you decide, you know, civil union is allowed, you get your, now designated gay partner. No, you can have your heterosexual life, others can have their homosexual lives, other people can have their solitude lives, it is a personal choice. Me and my partner aren't going to disgrace any sort of heterosexual marriage. I'm pretty sure everybody in this room knows the statistics on heterosexual marriages and divorces. We want that opportunity, too. You know what I mean? So, I'm sorry, I just, there was another gal up here saying, "Oh, because of AIDS, we have to wear gloves now." Thank God. Sorry, if it took AIDS to get the hospitals clean, right on. You know what I mean? For me to have my, my personal information protected, great, I'm all about that. For me to be somebody, I'm a contributing member to the society, I go to work every day, I work 40 hours a week, I pay my bills, I don't cheat, I don't steal, and I'm gay. Just like every other person in this room, typically. Again, I didn't come up here with any sort of planned speech, I just came to sit in. I've never been to one of these before, it's pretty neat, pretty interesting. I'm going to go ahead and just end with that because I'll probably just start rambling if I don't, so, thank you.
Thank you. And some would say that they're not always so interesting, some would say sometimes they're kind of boring, so. That's when we have like one or two people in the audience. Okay, Darryl Smith is the next speaker.
Madam Mayor, council member, Darryl Smith. I, my wife suggested I not come tonight. I've already spoken with Congressman Garrison today. What really bothers, I'm all for civil unions, as a matter of fact, I'm all for gay marriage. I believe in it wholeheartedly. I came from an area where I know a lot of gay people, lesbians, you know, men, love them. I mean, I've been to their homes, they've got loving homes, they pay taxes, they're bright, intelligent, wonderful people, raise children, pay their way through college. These are great people. There is nothing different from them. I'm kind of curious, and I, I hear so many people tell me, "Oh, gay or lesbian is a choice." Well, I'm wondering how many of the people behind me, at what age did they make a choice of being either gay or homosexual? Was it two, three years, five years, 10 years? At what age did they decide, "Gee, I think I want to be a homosexual. I want to be discriminated against, I want to be tossed out of society because I have to be this way." You know, I've got a young lady who, basically, I accept her as my daughter because I lost her. This young lady knew when her son was two years old that there was something wrong. She didn't know what, but she says, "I couldn't understand it. His brother played with boys' toys. He wanted to play with girls. He wanted little dogs." She said, "I knew then, as he grew older, that he was gay. Do you think I'm going to throw him out of my house?" No. You know, I listen to the people, this is a moral issue. I hear people quoting the Bible all the time. I can nitpick the Bible all day long about anything I want. You know, Bible says, "Don't kill anybody, well, go kill the guy that doesn't shave his beard." I mean, it, I won't get into it. What I love, though, is the city is doing this, the state, slowly but surely. You know, they say, "Oh, you do this, society's going to collapse." You know, they love to throw the word bestiality around, even in Congress they do it, trying to pick words that are shameful, terrible. This is not a shameful thing. It's not a disease. People are born this way. I know a gentleman, I met him up in Seattle, 22 years old, finally went to the doctor's office, couldn't understand why he, well, number one, he couldn't understand why he was gay, he gay, number two, couldn't understand what was wrong, terrible problems with his stomach. First time in his life he ever had x-rays. He had a uterus. I mean, he had, he had fallopian tubes, everything. I mean, you tell, "Well, this is God's will," you know, "Ah, so we're going to cure it," right? Randy, don't laugh. But I mean, you know, I just am so tired of quoting the Bible to take over how we love the sinner, we hate the sin, so we're going to discriminate and be hypocrites because that's the way it is. And that's, of course, one of the reasons you don't find me in a church. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bradley Blaylock, and I think you had five minutes already, so we could give you two more.
I just wanted to say that, you know, ministers shouldn't worry about being sued. I mean, we could be a cultural of a responsibility and just go to another minister that will accept you and instead of suing, supporting a culture of being sue happy and, you know, you know, I, I just want to be careful, but, you know, was it, we could have had a cultural responsibility and sacred reciprocity with, with, when Christians came to the United States and said there's been a Holocaust of 19 million people that have been killed? You know, I like, I've hung out with a monk from India that spent 14 years in Ashram with Gandhi and 40 years in a cave in the Himalayas. He never had sex, never had sugar, meat, or dairy, and I was sitting with him, and I asked him, "So Guruji, in your, in your speech, you, you said that in love, there's no masculine or feminine, it's just love, it's God. But what if you met somebody and by being in relationship and loving, responsible relationship with them, you were honoring your highest and most loving self? What do you think about that?" And he's like, "Oh, homosexuality, this is a sin." And then he went off on this whole Hindu Christian thing about, that was against it. And then I said, "Well, what if somebody was born embodying both sexes?" And he said, "Oh, this is a freak of nature." You know, so, you know, you can be, we're all spirits having a human experience, and we can all have it. It's just, I just want to support two people coming together, being loving, responsible parents, instead of, for greedy reasons, like getting more benefits or, or trying to keep your partner there, just to be a loving, responsible parent. There's plenty of kids that need to be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jette Tannett?
Thank you for this forum. I'm going to try not to shake because public speaking is not my thing. For me, it's always a separation of church and state. This isn't a moral issue, this is a social discrimination issue. It's acceptable in our community to discriminate against people of the same sex and their unions. On a side note, I would like to talk about the moral. If a heterosexual couple was defined completely by the acts behind a bedroom door as the entirety of their relationship, how horrible. How horrible, how demeaning. Thank you for bringing this topic forward because relationships between same-sex couples are way more than just the sex that happens in their bedroom. These are unions, these are families, these are extended families, these are- These are unions, these are families, these are extended families, these are blood connections, these are straight, gay, old, young. This is, these are people. They're people. And this is super important. I hope this is a stepping stone to same-sex marriage. This is where it starts. This is where communities say this isn't acceptable. We will not stand by discrimination, which is what is happening every day. We can be fired in this state, we can be denied housing. There are 1,137 federal marriage rights afforded same-sex couples that are, heterosexual couples that are not afforded same-sex couples. This is a government issue. When you stand in the church, it states, you are recognized by the state of. It is a state, this is, the counties, towns, cities. This is absolutely not a church issue. They can leave their moral discussion to the church. This is about discrimination, pure and simple. Thank you for bringing this forward. I really appreciate where you're at. I am not a resident of a town. I am a co-owner in a business in Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patricia Leider, or Leader? Leader?
Madam Mayor and Council, I'll read this so it'll go faster. Reviewing your background information, your justification, and your proposed ordinance number 604, registration and recognition of civil unions for certain purposes, I find it obviously and totally unnecessary. It is not solving a community problem, which is the job for which you were elected. It is most obvious from the content of this ordinance that it is only a necessary ploy to undermine and control the family and sacred institution of marriage by demanding the citizens of Cottonwood accept civil unions as several other governments, not their voting citizens, have demanded. The information you presented indicate that there is, that this is only the beginning and we can be forced by government to accept further disruption of the family unit on which all societies are built. Your ordinance ensures these new governmentally-created and controlled relationships follow the Arizona marriage codes. That is obviously so the government can control the slide of these relationships into proper, governmentally-approved marriages, as has happened in New Jersey. Provisions for registration, property, children rights, and obligations, storage of documents or lists thereof, terminations of these relationships, and documentation for these and other associated, other things associated with marriage make this even more obvious. You were elected by the voting citizens of Cottonwood to protect and defend the families of our community when actions follow societal and health practices for the betterment of the families of their community, their state, and their nation. You were not elected to alter those best practices or give special privileges to people who have chosen actions contrary to good societal and health practices. These ordinance purport to lessen discriminatory practices by declaring we must give legal sanction to those who have chosen antisocial and anti-biblical actions because they demand all segments of society approve, pay for, and even celebrate their chosen actions. Your ordinance discriminates against those who have chosen to accept actions that are, who have chosen not to accept actions that are detrimental to the family, especially our children, and society as a whole. That is what government and laws ordained and enforced by good government are supposed to do. This is called proper discernment, not discrimination. Good citizens expect and demand that. Good citizenship expects and demands that. Since these are not listed as enforceable and not binding, why are we wasting taxpayers' money, city employees' time, and city storage space to dispense, collect, and allow public access to unnecessary documents or lists thereof and foster these relationships and slide them into the marriage codes? As your information stated, the health providers of our area already allow people to choose who has access to them and their medical records because the HIPAA rules require that. Why have you wasted taxpayer money directing the attorney employed by the city to investigate what was an obvious fact? I don't understand. For this reason, your ordinance is unnecessary. We are all in the same boat. Thank you, HIPAA. You are already, you already have chosen to give benefits to members of those relationships if they are employed by the city. You did this without asking the cities who elect, the citizens who elected you if they chose to support and foster these relationships with their tax money. That means your other reason for drafting this ordinance is totally unnecessary. It is inappropriate for you to be redefining the family and undermining our children. It is not your job as representatives elected by the citizens of Cottonwood. Therefore, you should not have wasted time drafting it and should not be wasting time considering it. Focus on what is your job, solving problems that threaten our citizens who choose actions not detrimental to the families of Cottonwood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Last call for anyone else who wishes to speak?
If you, I haven't finished, I have a lot to finish because I think I was misunderstood.
If you, you can have two minutes.
I want to say, I have one person here that I dearly love and that's Penny. We've been friends forever. I love her dearly. But, I told her I was going to be against her tonight and she said, "That's okay." But anyway, I wanted to bring up the AIDS issue because of its exponential effect, the fact that we're doing just this little thing like civil unions. It's not hardly any, you've already got it already in most of the things. It's, but, it is a civil union that we're voting in and it's going to have exponential effects socially 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road. And my concern is with this type of allowing and subsidizing and supporting as a city is not what I think we should do. Because we are encouraging people in this kind of behavior and AIDS is still prevalent, it's still out there, there is no cure, and it's, we have 35 million people worldwide, we have 56,000 new cases a year. If you have AIDS, you're paying $2,500 to $10,000 a month. Now, that's going to be on your insurance, it's going to be on our insurance, rates are going to go up. If you can be insured. If you can't be insured, you're really in trouble. But, the task force has encouraged now, because we have such a prevalence of AIDS, to please get all adults, all pregnant women, all adolescents from age 15 to 65. All the people need HIV screening. And it wasn't like that 2005. It was just people at risk. But this is what's happening. So, the cost is going to go up. AIDS is growing. It's not cured. There is, we don't know why, well, we do know why it came about, but, some of the things that, we'll talk about tonight, the gloves. I was just trying to tell you that it's, it's cost.
It's over.
It's not gloves, people. It's not, we're not afraid of you. It's the cost.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, everyone got a chance to speak? There's no one leaving tonight feeling that they didn't get to see, talk about how they feel? Yes?
Could I just say one thing? Let's put this thing to rest by putting these gloves up to the people. It's not that the people want all this.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any comments or want to discuss any of the comments? Mr. Ilinski?
I guess first let me just say I'm really glad that everyone showed up tonight to speak. I appreciate it and it's fun to get a room full of people that don't agree with each other without good air conditioning and tight quarters, so...
And bad, a bad PA system.
And I don't want to get into the weeds too much on this. I just want to say, I just want to let everyone know how I feel about this. So, I obviously agree. I think I made that clear at the last meeting. I like the ordinance, I like the direction we've gone with it. I, I think the bottom line for me is that, America from the beginning, you know, when we drafted our Constitution, we've been trying to make sure that we create equality for everyone. And so, that's been our mission and our goal as Americans. And in Arizona, we, you know, 100 years ago, we, well, I think more than that, we were the first state to, one of the first states to allow women the right to vote, which for many of us now is, you know, before, a lot of the other states had allowed that. I think many people now think that that seems crazy, that we would not have allowed women to vote. But, we saw it necessary to create that equality here in the state and, of course, that spread nationwide and now here we are. Women can vote, like it or not. So, I hope that in, I believe in another 100 years, we will feel the same about civil unions. I strongly believe that. I am comfortable with the ordinance. Again, I don't, you know, we could really argue all day long about, you know, the moral implications pro and con, but this really for me is equality and I think it's what drives us as Americans. And that's why I stand by this ordinance.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I agree with the decision about moral issues, politics, or, you know, city places that are involved in religion because they would have to choose, who would prefer or who's, who's would we choose? We wouldn't want to discriminate against the religious by choosing one or the other. Also, I think it's not a matter of choice. For those of you who are heterosexual, I would ask you, when did you choose to be heterosexual? And conversely, you could do an experiment and say, "Well, I would choose to be homosexual." And you know, if you're heterosexual, you can't do that. I think it's a predilection. So, I really think this is just a civil issue. I don't think war is going to, I hate to have to correct my fellow councilman, but why don't we just go to the first step? But, I do think, again, we're just talking about people and this, a few folks said this is a human issue. And we love everybody and I think we need to extend the same rights to everyone, no matter where they're at, where they're standing. Thank you.
Any other council members? Mr. Haddig?
Well, I'd just like to tag on to what I just said right now. I mean, we've been through this once before in our discussions. But it goes back to the issue of believing that all people are created equal, period. I don't know about some of you folks out there, but, you know, during my time when I was growing up, I felt discrimination. I went to a restaurant and said, "Don't have one time with my wife, my girlfriend then, and we will refuse service." That's a minor thing compared to what we're talking about here today. But I know what it feels like. And discrimination is discrimination. I believe all people are created equal and they were created by God, by the way. I believe that. And, and, and we should all have, everyone should have the equal rights and protections under the law. That's what this comes down to.
Vice Mayor?
It's not a moral issue, but that's just a word. To the people that consider it a moral issue, it is a moral issue. But the people that consider it a civil issue, it is a civil issue. So, we just all need to be respectful of each other's feelings and opinions, whether we agree or not agree. I would like to see it go to a vote, you know, and let more people decide than just the seven of us. That's probably not going to happen. But, I, I think the people that spoke against it tonight have a right to speak against it and they also have a right to have someone that supports them, and I do. It's not a personal thing against anybody and I'm not saying moral, I'm not saying religion, I'm not, it just, I think they have a right to have someone up here also and I will be it.
Mr. Darling?
Well, you know, I've heard the comment of, "We want to put it to a vote." Well, that's kind of what we're here for. And, you know, it's easy to say, "Put it to a vote" when you're fairly certain that you have the majority that's going to win the vote. It is not easy when you are fairly certain that you might be the majority, the minority that has no chance of winning a vote. And I was, you know, I was elected by people. I don't know if, I didn't ask people when they elected me, "Are you heterosexual? Are you gay?" I didn't discourage their vote based upon their, their personal preferences. I think it would be ill of me to discount a person, to say, "Yeah, let's ignore the people who, who have already voted." I think there's a phrase, isn't it, "As you do to the, to the least of us, as you do to me," you know? Basically saying that, you know, I really, you know, there'll be different concerns about it, but I think that no one person is worth more than another person. And that is the real basic fact of this, is that, you know, we're all people, we all need to get along. And so, I'm going to make, I don't know that we need to put it to a grand vote for everybody. That's my job. And if because of my vote, you don't reelect me, that's fine. I didn't get into this as a popularity contest. I got into this to give the voice to people who don't have a voice. And so, I happen to have a child. And I'll say this and it informs my decision. I have a daughter who's a lesbian. I didn't ask her when she decided that. I found out when she got up in front of a school of 900 people and explained that and explained what she went through in her life. The trials, the bullying, and I couldn't be prouder of her. And I think she deserves the same right that I have and that my wife has to care for somebody and do it in a legal fashion. I don't want to stop or tread on anybody's beliefs. They're your beliefs and I am glad you have them and they make you who you are. And, you know, that's the way it's going to fall. But I think that it's up to me to make the vote because you guys elected me. If you don't like the way I vote, please let me know and you can just not vote for me again. But I think that to deny that would be to deny the voice of the unheard and I can't do that.
Mr. Ilinski?
Just wanted to comment too on the concept that it should go to the vote. Because I agree with Jesse, I think that we were elected to represent our constituents and I believe I am representing mine. I, you know, the people that I represent feel strongly about this ordinance as well and that's what, what matters to me. And again, if you don't like the way I believe, at least you know the way I believe and you can choose when I come up for reelection, whether or not you want me to be in this office. And I think also in history, there are times when it's just, people have to make that difficult decision and, you know, there were, there were towns in Poland and across Eastern Europe, Western Europe, where people living in those towns were breathing the smoke of burning bodies. And people didn't do anything for a long time. Millions of people died because a regime didn't respect the equality of the people. And, so, I feel this is one of those moments in time when we're here to make those difficult decisions. And I believe that, I feel very comfortable with, you know, with approving this ordinance and I believe that this will, you know, the tides are turning. This, I believe, will sweep Arizona. I believe that it will, there will be a statewide register, which will be great. This is, this is happening.
Did you want to comment at all? Randy?
I, I don't really know what I can add after two hours of conversation, but I do want to thank you all for coming tonight and sharing your opinions because we're up here, don't think the decision is made, don't think we know where we want to go with anything. It's because of you getting up and speaking your opinion and sharing that with us that allows us to make our decisions to move forward in how we deal with this. So, I do want to thank you all for taking the time, the effort to come up and speaking in public is not a fun thing and I know it was really difficult to do that and I appreciate you doing that for us. Thank you.
So, I guess that leaves me. So, how do I say this and how do I talk about this? With keeping my religion, you know, separation of church and state. But, I am a Christian. I accepted Jesus Christ as my Savior when I was eight-years-old down in Sierra Vista in a little Southern Baptist church and I still have my faith. So, when I was in church, we used to sing songs like "Red and Yellow, Black and White, They Are Precious in His Sight." And that's always stuck with me. I, through the years, have heard a lot of things in my own family. And, so, I do have that part of me, you know, that you've heard as a child. You know, my, my issues are discrimination because I think about Matthew Shepard and he was a young man who was gay in Wyoming. he was a young man who was gay in Wyoming, and they hung him on a barbed wire fence. That was wrong. We used to discriminate against black people, they were our slaves, and the Bible talks about Ham, and I've heard those stories too, in my religion. So we could discriminate against black people because the Bible told us to. Well, do all the efforts, Supreme Court, the people changed, we changed our minds to say that black people are not dogs to be whipped, they are people, they are human beings, and they are equal, as our constitution guarantees them. That goes for any, any color of person. I, being in the city and working with the city manager with the Holocaust issues, I attended one of his classes that talks about the slippery slope of what you do matters. And we killed over a million Jewish people and disabled people because we discriminated. I think about other issues, I think about people who are, as one gentleman stated, born with two sets of sex organs. That's their fault, right? They should be discriminated against. So I'm pretty passionate. Um, my brother-in-law is gay, and it was very hard for my family back in the 70s and 80s when he started talking about that. He was married, in a heterosexual relationship. That didn't work out. And, um, I can remember, it was very difficult, my husband had a very difficult time accepting it, and, um, I can remember driving in the car with my mother-in-law, and she loved her kids unconditionally. Her kids were, they couldn't do anything wrong. And, you know, we were talking about Rich, and, and he wouldn't mind if I mentioned his name, and she totally accepted his, his, um, announcement, but she said to me, she says, Diane, the thing that really bothers me is it's gonna be such a hard life for him. It's gonna be so difficult, there's gonna be discrimination. And so maybe my family history causes me to understand a little bit more about that discrimination, and so even though I am a Christian, and you can say I'm not if you wish, that's up to you, um, it just is not connected to civil rights for people. So I appreciate each and every one of you who came up tonight and talked, whether you were for or against. You were like the most awesome group of people having a discussion and being respectful of each other, and I really appreciate that. This could have turned out very differently, the conversation, it could have been nasty, but because you are good citizens, you all chose to speak in a manner that was respectful, and I totally appreciate each one of you for that. And you know what? That's kind of how Cottonwood is, we're respectful even when we disagree. So that's, that's my experience at least. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else that the council wants to talk about. This is the first reading, so we aren't voting on anything tonight.
I was gonna suggest we have the first reading.
And Madam Mayor, if I, if I could inject a very pedestrian opinion, maybe everybody's ready for that. Um, there was a, a discussion as we were crafting the ordinance about whether or not there would be a fee, um, attached with registering civil unions. Initially, we, we drafted a, a small fee for extra copies, um, but maybe that's a discussion and some direction we can have before the second reading and adoption, if, if that's to be the direction.
Um, Mr. Ilinski?
I think there should be no fee but fee for copies. I'm sure that would be in keeping with most of our other documents.
I agree.
Mr. Huttig, did you say something?
I did, and pretty much.
What, okay. So I think the council is saying that there wouldn't be a fee but a $5 fee for extra copies?
Correct.
Okay? As, as it was originally written, I guess, but Steve and I had a conversation about leaving that up to the council, because there is a cost for us to pay the city clerk and so, but she does a lot of things, I guess, licenses and all sorts of things already that there is no charge for, as I understand it. Okay? Um, so?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. So, um, let's see, what is it? So it is the first reading, and I would just ask the city clerk to read ordinance number 604 by title only.
Ordinance number 604, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the municipal code by adding a new Title 16 Civil Unions. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, and claims and adjustments.
I move that we pay.
Yes. It'll be whenever that is. You know, we're not quite sure that we'll have a meeting on December 19th, um, and it's not on the agenda, so we can't really discuss that, but the city clerk will be probably contacting the council members, and, um, right now, I'm thinking we won't have a meeting, but if the council wants to have a meeting, we probably will. So if we don't have a meeting on the 19th, it would be the first meeting in January.
Okay, that will be in the paper?
It should be, it's been every time so far.
City website.
It was, it was on the online version. So you might call your local newspaper and ask them about that, because we don't control them.
So basically.
Sir? Thank you, Mr. Pease, very much.
I move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Okay, so Mr., who are you? Mr. Pratt, I guess, and Mr. Huttig?
Mr. Kehoe.
Seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I move to adjourn. The mayor made the motion. Councilmember Ilinski seconded it, all in favor? We're adjourned.